Here, this is Paul. Here, this is Carrie. Here, Dr. Kelly.
Here.
I'm going to lead the pledge, please stand. Ready, begin.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to adopt our agenda, please. So, a second, new changes or additions in the agenda?
Uh, we have one correction, uh, July twenty thirty minutes, and I've been included for your review. And we have one addition, and that would be under reports number seven, to add a report from School Resource Officer Ashton.
Okay. And I would just, I can put, oh, I put it out on the paper. All, all in favor? All in favor of the agenda as a new visitor? I, I pose, carries five O. Now it's time for recognitions, we have none of the Z meetings, so public comment for non-agenda items. This opportunity to speak to the board on items that are not on tonight's agenda and are within our subject matter jurisdiction. There are some three-minute time limit with a maximum of twenty minutes per topic, although the board on request can extend beyond twenty minutes. Uh, there are blue cards to fill out if you wish to speak. If anyone wants to speak on, oh, we comment on non-agenda items.
Yes, my name's Howard Hills, and I was back in Charlotte, North Carolina, and I listened to the seven-hour meeting you had with the Aspen group, and I also listened to the last board meeting, and it sounded like you guys had a pretty interesting time. I thought I would come to this meeting because of my calming effect, and keep everybody calm here so things don't get out of control. Um, and it's interesting, in Charlotte, they've got a school district with a hundred and forty thousand students, and they just fired their superintendent, and they just hired within the district for a new superintendent. And you know, it's, it's interesting, because I've been actually for the last year going to a lot of different school districts in Maine, and Massachusetts, and Washington DC, and seeing how things going, you know, meetings do sometimes get kind of exciting. In some places, you have people throwing chairs at the school board from the audience, and then you really do need to do something to restore order, whether it's clear the room or bringing security or whatever that be. But you know what's great thing about the Gendarmas, we don't have any of those kind of problems here. Sometimes things get a little bit intense, and I listened to the meeting, and I think one of the problems was that the board, you know, if you want people to be calm, and you want things to be orderly, and you want people to focus on the merits, and you want people to follow your rules, you've got to follow your rules. And so, you know, when our situations are, for example, it's not clear whether somebody has three minutes to address everything in the consent calendar or just one item on the consent calendar, if you let somebody address just one item on the consent calendar, um, what about the other items? That means they can't address the other items? And, uh, you know, the thing about it is, I've been in many, many meetings where the board has, before, particularly before the video recording, where the board shouted people down, I was at a meeting where I was told that I couldn't, recently I was told that I couldn't comment on an item on the agenda, even though the education code says that everybody has to be allowed to comment on any item in the agenda. The president of the board stated on the record that the board had decided not to allow public comment on that item on the agenda. So then when I contacted the school district about that, I was told, well, your problem is with, you tried to speak after we moved on to next agenda item. Well, the problem is, is that I was waiting for the public comments on the agenda item I didn't get to speak on. So, when you don't follow your rules, that increases the frustration in the public, and I could hear that in listening to the last meeting, and that was kind of interesting. The other thing I want to talk about tonight was that, you know, I noticed that, um, oh, I guess I'm getting twenty minutes tonight, is that the deal? So, I did notice that, um, you know, at the last meeting, there was some confusion about the closed meeting and who could attend the closed meeting and who couldn't attend. And I noticed that the item, the, 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 uh, closed meeting item was about two items. One was a legal matter, and one was a personnel matter. And you know, you adopted this resolution allowing you to exclude one member of the board on personnel matters, but you didn't do that. And I was just thinking that since you passed that resolution, and you do have the ability to exclude on, um, personnel matters, you need to make it clear to that board member whether they're being excluded or not. And since you did pass that resolution, if you want them excluded, instead of trying to exclude them just by not being clear about which item they were excluded on, you should actually exercise your power under that resolution and exclude them or not exclude them. But anyway, uh, thank you for your time.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items? We have reports, we have Margaret for CSEA.
Yes, um, thank you. I attended the CSEA conference in Las Vegas, which was really about a six-day event. Everyone knows it's not my favorite place, so I do this out of pure dedication, let's put it that way. And, um, it was very interesting, we had great educational days with, I go to the ones on insurance just because that's my specific real interest, because there's so much information out there as we all now. And the election took place of our Board of Directors with one, there was a vacancy in the secretary position, and so that has been filled, and everyone's better excited about that. I should also say that overall with CSEA, CSEA has stayed very strong after the Janus. And so, the percent of people that have left CSEA is very, not, not, not really significant, which has left its money in the bank, so to speak, for things that they plan on doing. There's a program which has just been launched that was in existence for obtaining an associate degree, and now they're moving toward, towards with a specific college to obtain a V A degree, where it only costs about forty-five hundred dollars total, and looking at the future for master's degrees. So certainly great things coming out of CSEA. Um, on another level, um, some of our administration has got to meet Emma Lopez, which is our new labor rep. She's experienced, CSEA member, was a parent educator, then a librarian, and then went through the Member Unity Program, and has been the labor rep in Sacramento for sixteen districts for the last two years. Very pleased she came to the new employee orientation, wanted to learn what we're about and what we're doing. Just extremely excited about that. So with that, I think you have a great year to look forward to.
Did have a email from Sarah today that she wanted me to like, that she was really appreciative of the leadership days, and complimentary of the process, and how great it was. I agree with that, yes. And you both were there. Okay, board members. Dr. Kelly?
No. No report.
I, I, um, attended Community Coalition. Sorry, I did not have a big voice. I attended Community Coalition, and the information wasn't that date, the, the action plan.
Yeah.
And then, um, the crime lab did come up and speak and shared with us about all the different crimes that have to do with alcohol and drugs, especially behind the wheel, and that's fascinating. And, um, and I really appreciate all of the work, all of the different organizations put into the community coalition to support our families, parents, kids, and, um, and for Dr. Keller, for all the work he does in providing them with what the district needs and supports, and I'm really working to make sure those things are implemented in the states. And so it is, is working in a way I haven't ever seen it work, and hats off to all of them for figuring out a way to manage it and make it work. But there's so many organizations, they all do such specific things, and so putting all that together to figure out how that helps, it's tremendous work. So I just want to hats off to them, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have within that action plan or bring them or something like that, if you think you want me to share answers. And then I did want to thank Dr. Gloria for all the legislation information, I'm always fascinated by that, okay, it's very helpful. And for the very easy-to-consume quarterly communication update, it clearly shows that all of the efforts you guys are putting in are really making a difference. And Laura came up with the great idea of the pop-up window for ranking the inclusion, the growth that that took off. So for, um, for, it's a wrap. And then your welcome back letter was just spot on, and engagement, and reflection, and celebration, you know, to do all those things, and, I mean, short letter, references. And I actually, I look forward to strategic planning, yeah, and the kickoff finish quarter.
Yeah, well, I haven't attended any meetings, things aren't started yet, but I did follow up on the process. Will we be taking another look at our policy on, on campus and based on that legislation, or are we, do we need to take a look at it?
It's really up to you as a board to determine if that's a step you'd like to take. Obviously, I shared with, with you what is out there. We have a policy, we have a process that we follow, but if there's interest on, from board about springing back at one of our next policy workshops, we can, uh, for discussion.
If, if we do do that, my, uh, my interest would be in hearing from our site leaders, how they perceive them on their campuses and, because I know there's been some comment after we started doing the one, one to one, that then there were some teachers that found it to be problematic, then they had their own advice, because our blocks and our things work. So they took then different systems, and there's our classes that they found worked there, and I just, if we're going to examine it again, I would like to have that information. I don't know whether, how timely that is, or if it's, I wouldn't want it to, to take time in this renovation.
I'll follow up with the principal's principles, and we can have a discussion about it and bring it back.
And then, uh, it was nice to be asked for a comment on the niche ranking, and I don't know, one of you is going to speak to that tonight, or, that's, I don't want to take away your report, but it was, I mean, some of the things that have been going on the last few months, it was really nice to be asked for a comment on something so positive. And it was, I, it was a surprise to me, so it was.
Kind of caught me off guard as well, it came real fast, so.
It did, it did. It's not just you, I don't want to say it, just a question.
Is, is someone going to talk about what it is?
Yes, yeah, I would, we don't want to ask that, we don't want to create, so, definitely.
Well, I'll start with that, um, so, uh, Niche is, uh, does rankings, and one of the things, uh, that they kind of look at a holistic view, and they also use feedback that they receive from folks who go on and take time to actually post. And so, uh, based off the feedback, um, they ranked us number one in Orange County, uh, that's the one district in Orange County, and we're in the top ten in the state, we are the only district, I think, in the top ten from Orange County, um, in, in the state. So, uh, very proud of all that, it's culmination of a lot of work that we've been doing, the boards and supporting, um, over the last several years. And, uh, we shall be very proud of that, and appreciate the, the quote for the paper, I think it was timely, and a great way to kick off the year. To be honest, a lot of nice parts I wouldn't have for that, so. And there's copies of them on the dock table, but the Hainock girl, back there, people are grabbing them, so. We, it's been busy, as you heard from Margaret Ordor, uh, we've been preparing for the school year, and I appreciate Dee and Jem for being able to stop by for a little bit at the leadership meeting. We are doing a ton of work at the schools, um, and I think you'll notice, uh, the Artist Theater is getting a full kind of touch-up on the outside, after we finished all a lot of the renovations on the inside, and obviously the new restroom facilities are coming along very well there. So, very proud of all the work, a lot of thanks to our custodial staff, maintenance staff, this is one of the busiest times of the year, and they've been putting in a lot of long hours at the site, so much appreciation. We do have a welcome back breakfast coming up for all of our staff, and we're looking forward to that. And one thing to note, I thought it was a, a nice culmination, again, uh, thank you to the board for approving, uh, the IBC agreement. We had twenty-seven students finish the IBC, um, psychology classes summer, so, uh, very good. Dr. Holland's gonna, uh, just reach out to a few of the students and get some feedback correctly from them, and we'll include that in the weekly update as well in the next couple of weeks, so, once we get back up on the list. So, again, great start to the year, very happy, I know we say great start to the year, we haven't actually gotten there yet, but we will. Um, I feel like we have, just because it's been so busy the last couple of weeks, so.
Okay, so, um, we launched a new employee orientation this last Monday. We have seventeen new staff members who attended, and it was pretty much split between classified and certificated. We're very excited to be here, we did some getting to know you activities. They'll be all introduced at the welcome back breakfast next week. We've been busy, as Dr. Gloria mentioned, preparing for the school year. The principals have really taken a lot of ownership of the staff development next week, um, and so they put in a lot of hard work for that, so thank you to them for those preparations, and for the directors, um, also contributing to that and supporting that work. And we have a lot of classified staff development next week, um, that both Irene and Michael have contributed to planning and making sure that all of our staff have the skills to be able to work with our students. So we're very excited about that.
Thank you, President, there is building off of Dr. Gloria and said our maintenance and the still those staff have been very busy this summer. Um, one of the great things we want to promote in our district obviously is staff appreciation. And last week, Mr. Zeta put on a barbecue for maintenance, custodial, um, workers, and almost all of them attended, morale was very high, and you could feel the sense of appreciation that they had. So, nice job, Mr. Zeta, that was a very fun event, and I love when you're on barbecue and not me explaining.
Thank you. All right, um, we have our consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry, I wrote it here, and I, I over it, excuse me.
We're not going to skip you, I promise.
Not going to skip you. Please come, um, our School Resource Officer, focus. Thanks, thank you. Oh, listen, we're going to go.
Welcome back, everyone, a great summer. So, uh, last week, we had the opportunity, uh, our police department to, uh, really, uh, take part in a team leadership academy. And this was a collaboration, not just by our police department, but, uh, members in our community, uh, members of our school district. It was very empowering, and besides me as a community service officer, Natasha Hernandes, if you don't know her, she has a lot of community outreach, a lot of presenting, a lot of education, uh, she's a, a well-known face here in our city. But, um, this academy was something that really was inspired by our kids, inspired by, uh, my upbringing as, as a kid. Growing up, I dealt with a lot of peer pressure, emotional stress, a lot of self-deception, trying to figure out who I am, um, as a young man, growing up, the hardships, the struggles that I had endured, you know, really focusing on who I am as, as, as a person in the core. Um, and then when I came here to our district as a school resource officer, I started to see the same issues with, with our kids, the same correlation, uh, but also now you throw on the social media and the things that that brings, and it really, you know, it helps, it hurts kids in terms of them dealing with coaching skills and finding that resilience. So I found it in my art, um, to put together this leadership academy. So most police departments, they focus on, uh, police functions, they do have team academies. But again, our goal was to really dig deep into the core, um, bring leaders into our organization. So we had tons of presenters that presented on leadership, okay? Every presenter talked about their story, their upbringing, the struggles and sacrifices they had to make to get them to their next. We wanted kids to hear, uh, these stories to help them really understand that life involves struggles, and it's okay to ask for help. It's okay, uh, to, to, to have the anxiety and, and to, to, to feel the way, a lot of kids feel when they're going through something. We wanted them to, to hear first-hand from the leaders that, hey, uh, this happens, but you're gonna be okay, you're going to get through it. And so our goal was, again, build still conf- confidence, resilience, help them understand the importance of service, and prepare them for the future. So we talked about leadership development, okay, straight school leader, we had guest speakers, we did some team-building exercises to get kids, um, really used to, you know, interacting with each other. We had kids from Laguna Beach, from Tustin, Mission Pico, um, from all over. We did some kayaking, uh, La Vida's Laguna assisted with that. We had Peter Levy, uh, coming from the ADL to talk about, uh, implicit bias, diversity, and inclusion. Uh, we even went to the Museum of Tolerance, uh, we did a team-building exercise at the Chargers facility. We had a player come speak about, uh, their journey and the, and the struggles they had in journey to their next. Uh, and so as you can see, we had a lot of things going on, so many different facets were involved. Uh, Chief Ramella came in and surprised the kids with a pancake breakfast. And, um, and so we wanted to teach the kids the importance of, of, of serving leadership, serving others, that you don't have to be at, at the top to serve people. You can be anywhere, um, in that, in that chain, it doesn't have to even be in the workplace, you can be in your life, serving others is very important. Corporal Ferris, who's our, uh, community outreach officer who deals with the homeless, he came and presented on, uh, the importance of building relationships with all people from, of different walks of life. Uh, he really spoke on how showing empathy and compassion helps him to benefit in his job and what he does. Right after that, we took a field trip to the Orange County Food Bank, and prepared over two-hundred-and-eighty, uh, boxes of food for families in need. We did a beach cleanup with Laguna Ocean, uh, Foundation, and, uh, kids really learned a lot about the importance of keeping our communities clean, and just really doing that outreach, again, went to the Museum of Tolerance. Uh, we did curb-side CPR with Laguna Life Arts and, uh, and Fire, uh, learning, if kids are in a situation of performing CPR, uh, they learned that. We focused a lot on life skills. We had, uh, uh, Dr. Vassa, uh, she's from Newport Beach, came in and taught the kids mindfulness, uh, and gratitude, and journaling. We had, uh, the Yes for Innovation Youth Educational Services come in, teach kids about resume building, interview techniques, presenting, uh, they did some mock interviews. And so, the goal of all of this, most part with financial literacy, uh, we talked about, we, uh, did lockdown drills. But we really focused on all the things that kids worry about. We focused on some kids, I guess adults even, presenting, you know, interviewing, you know, uh, just all the things that are really concerning the kids, that they worry about, the stresses. We had, uh, Alex Erickson, uh, our social-emotional counselor from the high school, come in and do a segment on mental health awareness. Kids were exposed, and they really, they were put in uncomfortable positions throughout that five-day, uh, period. But it really empowered them and strengthened them, and really helped them to work together, and really learned from it. And so, I keep saying this, but it takes, it takes a village, I love our city, I love our community. None of this could be possible without, um, our leadership here, our, our school district. You guys provided us a classroom, our resources that we need to make, to make this happen. The kids are safe, they feel comfortable here, uh, they really expressed the gratitude for you guys just really coming forward and helping us out with this. Uh, this isn't a police thing, I call this a community thing, um, we really care about our, our kids, uh, we care about our district, and we want to help them get to the next, we want to empower them to be the best that they can, and that was the lessons that they took away. In closing, the pre, the kids had to do a presentation, um, prior to graduating on the fifth day, and they talked about what they took from the leadership, um, Teen Leadership Academy. And a lot of them, um, spoke on the things that we're hoping to really address, and they felt empowered, they felt better, they feel like they can really, uh, do things that they thought they couldn't. When they knew, they felt like whenever they were going through struggles in life, that support was there, supports in their school, uh, system, supports at home. All I have to do is just reach out and talk about it, and just really believe that I'm gonna be okay, I'm gonna be standing tall. So there's a lot of revelation that came out through this, so again, thank you for it, and again, it takes a village, our, our police, our teens, our community all coming together to really help our kids and our city really does a good job, um, with that district, and I couldn't, couldn't do this without you, I just really say thank you.
Thank you. Can, how were this, this team selected?
So they had to write an essay, uh, they had, had to produce their grades, and their essay was really about, you know, why they wanted to be in the, the program. Some kids got really, uh, you know, dove in deep to in detail what they wanted to get from the Leadership Academy. So we really based our selection based on how kids expressed themselves, um, some kids that I dealt with here on the campus in Laguna that I kind of had rapport with, and kids that I thought really could benefit, I mean, there was a lot of, um, circumstances at fifteen. We were hoping for thirty, but I'm glad we went with fifteen, because it was more intimate, it was manageable, um, so it was the first time, things worked out perfect, there weren't any issues. We were putting in thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-hour days, and, uh, every day they came, came back energized, ready to go. The kids, parents were telling us that their kids are waking up on time, I mean, we started at six, seven, five, four, uh, some days. Can't wait to come back, and they didn't want to leave. At graduation, uh, you finish at five-thirty, kids were there till seven-thirty, and, and parents, they did not want to leave, um, because there was this bond. And, um, OC food thing, for example, kids were, you know, everyone was trying to find a role, and within two minutes, it was like this, something just clicked, and they were just working together in unison, or, when we had mental health awareness training, it was a heavy day. We had a mother, um, Maddie come in, Mothers Against Strong Drive, and talk about mother who lost her child, it was a really heavy day. But at the end, you know, one of the students came with their guitar, started playing the guitar, and you just saw this harmony, like you had these kids from all walks of life just coming together. And from that, and that was day two, from that point on, it was just, it was just one big family. And, uh, and, and it, and, and these kids are gonna forever be friends, forever have a bond, and I feel like we learned even as adults, what we took away, and Chief Ramella didn't speak on it, but she took away from it personally, and she learned, um, from the kids. It was like a, a, a mutual, um, you know, lesson for all of us, and so I'm proud of it, it's going to continue. Um, it, we've had, heard nothing but, but positive feedback, again, and it was a, it was a vision that I had, and I told the kids that, that, you know, a dream is a, you know, it's, it's a thought asking for permission to live, and let this be an example of where a dream can take you. And so, there, there's a lot of magical moments that were happening.
Sounds, it's just terrific, I mean, I think it's, I'm really impressed that you had this idea that you did this, that's, uh, kids need that. I mean, it's, for those fifteen kids, it was obviously would have been beneficial, but it's, it will make a difference for them, you know that.
Thank you, I agree.
And I think the adults, what the adults gain from that is a better understanding of what it's like for kids in the current time.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we got really, and I, I said, you know, some of us have loved parents, some of us lost loved ones, some of us, you know, struggle with certain things every single day, but you're gonna be okay, you're gonna get through it, you have to, you have to really reflect on yourself and on your life and understand that, you know, you're not the only one in the room who's suffering in some way. And the, 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 the more you can understand that it's okay to express yourself, express how you feel, talk about it, get it, get it out, you know, so you can, you can maybe get to work on those issues and address them, uh, the better option would it be, you know? And, and so we really, that was, we wanted to focus on the core, the inner core, um, and a top-down speaking of leadership. It's not all the twenty-six words that have to do with leadership, it's leadership starts within, it starts with you being an example of how you want others to be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We do, now we move on to our consent calendar, and we will take, uh, public comment on the consent calendar. Process that we have set up and that we follow is to take public comment, and then, as I repeated a couple times at the last meeting, trying to clarify where the confusion, the board members then may pull every item off individually, reflecting what they hear as concerns coming from the public. Public comment?
Yeah, my name's Howard Hills, I just wanted to follow up, I mentioned the issue with the consent calendar. And, uh, you know, one thing occurred to me, is that, uh, you know, it's great to have governance workshops and everything, but, uh, one thing occurred to me that you might want to do, and you actually could do this in conjunction and cooperation with the student government, is, um, have a parliamentarian here, um, to rule on issues. For example, it's one thing for the board to decide that a member of the public's out of order, but what about members of the public when the board's out of order? And that's why you have a parliamentarian, to avoid that situation, you know, people get kind of excited because there's, you know, people become vocal, vocal or whatever. And, uh, you know, if you look at the British Parliament, and they have their session, everybody's, everybody becomes very vocal. That's not necessarily a threat to democracy, uh, but the point is, you restore order by having predictable rule of law, uh, judgments being made, and where there's a sense of fairness, and I think, um, clarifying who can pull, um, is, you know, a good thing to do. But what happens is, um, you know, when there are issues like, can members of the public comment on every item? I certainly have never heard anybody suggest that a member of the public can pull something off the calendar, members of the board certainly can. But the point is, when there's confusion about those kind of issues, one thing to maintain order is to have somebody that can rule competently and definitively, uh, in real time, thinking on their feet, so that the public can have confidence that they're being treated fairly. I don't think that happened at the last meeting. I'll leave it there, other than to just say, we had a teen academy with the police back in nineteen sixty-nine, and it was initiated by the students, and it was a great program, and I was really happy to see that it's been initiated by, um, your officer, um, and, uh, I commend that program.
Any other public comment on the consent calendar? Any items that board members, uh, properly, that's any call, any, A one? Anything else? Any, any questions, any simple questions? Motion for adoption, please?
A seven.
Seven.
Second.
I just wanted to point out that on uh C, that is a ratification on that field trip.
Oh.
So they just um. Okay, on favor. The what in, I'm sorry, the motion was, I should have placed by that, item A to B through J.
Okay.
So uh on favor.
I.
opposed. Here's five O. Uh item A, I, in I at one. Um motion, please.
Submit.
Second.
We're really amused because Carol is not here, so. Uh all in favor?
I.
Opposed and赞成. Thank you. We have an information item tonight, an update to audio visual recording equipment for the boardroom and implement closed captioning requirements for ADA compliance for live streaming during board meetings.
We're gonna have Mike come and give the first part and we'll talk to you with some of the other pieces.
Okay.
Thank you, nice to meet you, nice to meet you, board. We uh, right now, just to give you a status on where we're at. We have uh recordings going on of the board meetings, obviously, and those are fed into YouTube and then YouTube captions them after they're done with that process. So that's the following day, so that's the way it works for them. So you know, this system has been put together over many years, like we that we've added mics, we've added video, we've added a lot of systems that have kind of come together. And it would be better, I think, in the future to build a system that was uh built from the ground up for what we do here in the board meetings. And so in the last, a few board meetings ago, we had talked about a system and Dee had mentioned, hey, do you have any other vendors that you, to see if the price was in line? And so we reached out to some other vendors and prices were in line. But in that process, we realized that there is a decision point that we're at in this process, which is um, are you going to, would you prefer to uh do closed captioning and live streaming at the same time? Or would you prefer to do it the way we're doing it now, which is af- the day after, we would have the recordings available? So that changes the what we purchase in the system a little bit. And it is significantly enough to where it would change the price a little bit in what we propose to you. Because the items, the hardware, the connectors, the things like that, that you would use those systems would be different. So that's kind of what we're at with that system. We we would, it it is gonna uh cost, you know, it's a considerable cost. And so we we would be bringing that back at a future date once you make that decision, that live streaming decision.
And the other decision is.
Thank you.
Related to, is this a location? It it can only be in one location, so if the intent is for it to be in this location, um then that gets us a place to start. So if we know that this is the location that we can host the board meetings at, because we can't, the system is not something that we can transport. Uh and uh as uh Mike mentioned, you know, there are some components of the system that would have to adjust. If we were to go with live streaming and the closed captioning at the same time, YouTube YouTube doesn't allow that. It's it's uh after the fact is when they do closed captioning. So the system would have to be a video capture system that allows closed captioning to be added to it. Uh so we have reached out to several different groups to find out what it is. Uh but roughly, we're thinking price wise, as I've mentioned uh in previous passing, anywhere between ten to twenty thousand dollars a year for closed captioning. So that would mean.
At the live.
Live closed captioning.
Okay.
It would be free if we were simply did the YouTube and closed captioned after the fact. But to do live closed captioning, meaning uh we have to have a system that allows us to close caption on it. Um so Granicus is one, there are others out there, but the rough estimate uh is going to range from uh ten to twenty thousand dollars a year uh to do that, so.
And is it that we're saving in the proposal for the new technology? Hold just a minute. Oh, is it um?
Sorry, our mics, this one's not powering.
Which is to your point, but um, is it that there's an additional cost as well to do live streaming with a person or some other way than YouTube? Not live streaming, I mean, closed captioning. Is there a difference in the cost of actual hardware as well as the cost of live streaming?
So, yes, so for example, Granicus, um we could continue with our, what we're doing right now, which is the YouTube. Um and there's no additional uh Granicus cost. Granicus is an additional hardware component that you have to have in order to live stream because they become the, they essentially become the provider, right? So.
Okay. And does that cost you?
Which would be a, yeah, it's in there sixty three hundred per year, but but the but that's for the grand.
So the forty nine thousand six hundred plus another sixty three hundred, right?
Plus. Plus that, plus if the, there is a Granicus bot somewhere, then we'd have to upgrade every four years, probably.
Okay.
So that would be an ongoing cost that you'd have to upgrade to keep it up to speed. So, w- if you decide just to do uh the after the fact closed captioning with YouTube, we could actually eliminate the Granicus bots potentially and just use YouTube because we could, that would be a free solution for 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 the ongoing costs we have to pay.
And so that's the forty nine thousand six hundred and sixty two dollars?
That would just be, yeah, but 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 the uh, I think they're gonna mention it later. We did, one thing I did wanna mention in here, we've talked about this before, was that the the high school uh artists did our interest and we talked to them about the cameras and they would like to put those in over there and this controller so that they can record. That's, that's good.
So we can reuse the equipment, right, okay.
And the the cost of that box, it's right over four years, is how much roughly, what would be?
No, I wanna say, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I wanna say it's under ten thousand.
Okay. I have a tie in question with online agendas. I'm not sure if this ties into any of the because there there was a time we were trying to do, kind of go paperless.
So we were waiting, that was one of the uh reasons we were kind of holding off a little bit, trying to get some feedback from Board Docs and CSBA.
Right.
We don't believe CSBA has the functionality because they don't have a streaming service to do that.
Okay. Okay.
Um in kind of looking at Board Docs, we don't see them having the functionality either to do the the streaming.
Okay.
It it is a very unique thing. Uh so that Granicus, there there is another one that we're investigating that we believe can do both.
Okay.
Um there are some districts.
But maybe they're not ready yet, it's such a couple days.
Yeah, there are some issues that are.
There's there's somebody we found that says they can do both, we just haven't connected, we had plenty of.
Okay. Okay.
We expect the price point to be around the same, um you know, for closed captioning uh with them as well.
Okay.
Cause that's been the going rate of approximately the league.
Okay.
You know, based off of the hours that we have meetings, the hourly rate for somebody to close caption live um is what it is. Hundred sixty to two hundred dollars.
And ADA allows either way for us to go?
Cause that's why I thought that we had to live stream. I thought we had to close caption during the live streaming.
Yes. You do have to close, if you live stream, the law says you have to close caption. If you post it after the fact, YouTube allows the closed captions um for us. So, but YouTube will not do it live. And there's no, we can't add closed captioning to a YouTube video while we're doing it live stream. So that means it has to be a separate system like Granicus, which hosts the video
Okay.
and then they're gonna have a system to allow somebody to type live closed caption. It would have a slot to live.
I thought that's what you were trying to solve it in. I thought you were saying that we had to make that decision whether we wanted to close caption during the live streaming or do it the next day.
Correct.
We don't have that choice.
No.
Well, you have a choice, either you, either you're gonna go live stream, you have to close caption.
You have a choice. Right.
Decide not to, you have a choice. If you choose not to do that, that's what I'd like to say, if you choose not to live stream, then YouTube
Okay, okay, then.
our next day would archive view, maybe the closed caption then.
Okay. I got it.
So there will be a little bit of a delay because the person's gonna be live closed captioning and so. Um which is different than, you know, what's currently, you know, if you have a channel, the TVs all have closed captioning on it. It's a requirement by law, so all people do is hit the closed caption button and the TV does it.
Right.
We straight, we don't have a TV channel.
Okay.
And um in conversations, actually, we're sitting on a trip it, when I mentioned that this is something that we were going through during one of our meetings, he was taking note because I believe there might be um down the road, they may lose the ability to be on TV. I don't know to what degree, but that was something that he was saying, we probably should keep this and uh keep, let us know how this process goes because he understands that's required.
So that's the difference for them is that they're on a TV channel, so they, okay.
Yes, yeah, so it comes with the uh the TV.
As long as you turn it off.
You survive.
But as long as it uses it.
The user.
Is part of this process though upgrading our whole system because we've had a lot of trouble with send the whole time, so.
Yeah. Yes.
I think, like, yes, I mean, the, I I think the audio can be better. And uh if you're gonna do closed captioning with an offsite person, you're gonna want the audio to be very, very good.
Right.
Which would require some of you to like adjust to make sure you're speaking into the mic, or get a bigger mic that's longer. And that's one of the requirements in the system, so that you have each have your level.
Yes, maybe it would be nice to have one with the podiums. Will they be uh turn on and off?
Yes, no. Yes, turn on and off, all of them had that feature.
So the sixty three hundred dollars is bigger mics or?
No, the that's the the system, the fifty thousand for the whole, since we're doing everything, all the mics.
It's present fast.
That's just right here, the next one, true.
All the cameras. And it gives, it shows kind of what we're doing with it and switch and rack a little bit, starting over uh and doing it right.
Okay. Okay. I have one more question. Sure. So they have ten thousand eighty dollars annually roughly to have someone type it, right? That was the cost, I think, because the cost of the.
Approximately ten to twenty.
Yeah, and then the upgrade for that are four years divided, right? So about another twenty five hundred dollars a year to grab it up, using that. So that's the cost, I don't, yearly base to comply with the live stream. Okay. And then an additional sixty three hundred dollars to the forty nine thousand dollars for the equipment.
For the Granicus license.
The one time for the license, oh, the license is renewing to two days.
So you're, that's that's your, that's your.
Oh, so that's it's.
Oh, but yeah, it's a separate.
Oh, is that where you get to the twenty thousands? Is that where you're at?
It's all the current, yeah, that's what we're currently paying for, correct?
That's what I had, I had, I thought it was one time, okay, so that's.
Annual.
So you are at twenty thousand dollars to your, you're at twenty thousand easily, and if they have more meetings, we're at more.
Yes.
For the person to.
Oh, yes, for a business.
Right, right, okay. So it's twenty thousand dollars, and how many districts live stream in Orange County? I don't think we share so many times.
Uh, nobody live, well, I should say, I think Irvine might be live streaming. But everybody else is, those that are doing it are tele, so it's Garden Road, it's televised. Um and I mean, Santa Ana, it's televised, if I recall correctly. Other than that, everybody, like YouTube, that's what uh New New Formations is using YouTube and then their closed captioning after the fact. Um so then it just, it's also, they're not live streaming anymore.
So they're not live. Okay.
And when you, it's interesting, I spent a little bit of time kind of looking, we've been looking for different companies out there, so.
Yeah.
Um, we're not immune, we weren't the only ones, it just happened to type up live streaming and ADA compliance. And it was article after article about municipalities, school districts sustaining their live streaming because there was a lack of compliance over the last several years. And so we're included, obviously, in that, but um so yeah, there's a handful of of local districts um that are in use of TV channels. Um Irvine is is one and we looked into what they're currently using and we do not believe that would be um a positive uh live streaming experience for anybody. Um so we think we decided not to investigate them further and the cost was significant, not any close to the twenty grand, so.
And I do one question. The the licensing and the equipment on that, that could be added on at some other time as well? Like if we end, so we end up moving forward with equipment, we say this is our location or wherever the location is, whoever we agree upon.
Yeah.
We have the public comments comment on here. We could always wait for Victoria to finish the research, but you can move ahead with equipment? Is that accurate or not?
We we can't, we, the the equipment's continued on the location because you're gonna wanna, you're gonna, cause there's installations.
You can't. Right. Right, so if we decide on that tonight, then you can determine the equipment?
Yeah.
I I'm just asking, but uh live streaming, until Victoria checks out the last thing on our agendas, can you move forward the equipment or you have to have an answer on the live stream before you can get it?
I think we, if you tell us whether you're going to do live streaming and captioning together or if you're gonna do it the other way, which we're doing now, then we could move forward on equipment. We could bring forth, at the next board meeting, we can bring forth a a quote for that, those two different options. Depending on if, I'm I'm assuming that we would choose that system as well at the same time.
Right, that's what I've heard. Are you saying her agenda possibility of paperless could tie into the new. Who is?
Yes, could could tie into it, yes.
Okay.
And you would bring that as an option as well? Is that what you're, once we give you location?
My understanding is, yes, we would bring that together. That's separate items, but they would come in the same workflow.
It's like pieces of the puzzle coming together.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, okay, let's just have to make sure I'm recording.
And part of the puzzle, and I'll, I can kind of release, there's just part of this as well that relates to the thought exchange kind of feedback that we were receiving in the community, so I'll at least kind of briefly kind of go over that, you have it in front of you, so just
Yeah. Okay.
Again, so you can see what the community was saying as well.
And so we wanted to better understand the way people access board meeting information in general and to see if any other thoughts were shared about ideas we hadn't considered. Um and so it it was pretty predictable and pretty balanced. Um so I don't know that there was a lot of new information. Um there are some people who really felt that live streaming was important, that they felt that having that immediate access was important. Uh and then there were others who said, the archive meeting is fine, I can access it after the fact. Um because I, you know, if I'm not attending the meeting, then I'm usually doing something else. Um so we asked about uh or some people shared thoughts on the email newsletter and people liked that um option as well. So I think the the information gleaned from this thought exchange was that we need a variety of ways to to provide the community with information about what. Yeah. No matter what we choose, we will always archive the meetings.
Yes.
So that's a given.
That's a given.
Okay. And that was a little bit of a confusion, you can tell. I can tell that in the last. On to the thought exchange, they thought if we don't live stream, that we're not archiving. Right, which is. So that was, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I know there were people who said live streaming would then just start to put the work out and who has all done the last one right there.
Right. I know, it is very confusing, so.
Yeah. Well, I wish I had some questions for third page.
Okay, so now to end.
I just had a question for Lisa, so there were two hundred and forty three participants, but did some people not answer every question or how they?
That's correct, so some people didn't share a thought, but they rated the thoughts of others. So you can actually, you don't have to share your own thought, you can just go in and rate what others have said. Um and some people, um you could see there were two hundred and forty three participants and that's why we only have two hundred and forty thoughts. So three people just went in and rated the thoughts of others.
Thank you.
They rated them multiple times.
And one other question, are we, are we considering another place?
No, one of the topics that has come up has been related to art orbit and functionality and there's been questions about
Right. Right.
Would it be, would be better served at using the library, for example, the high school, because it had, maybe it's more conducive
Right.
because people who are the audience are sitting in the foyer here.
Right.
Uh so what I just needed was uh if the board intends that this is the space, because we've talked about also having some furniture changes as well, or recommendations from Aspen to have some potential furniture changes, so you guys can see each other better. Uh maybe we have to look at different sort of rolling chairs, how do we get the environment more conducive? But we don't wanna do any of that until the board as a whole says that we're good here, this is where we wanna be. So we can go ahead and make the step and start putting in the infrastructure and make make get those upgrades going. I didn't wanna make that decision until, I mean, these are your meetings, so I wanna make sure you're you're happy with the location.
And to public comment until we go into more direction.
My name is Howard Hills, you know, this district in the past has touted itself and made a uh done a lot of public relations publicity about being a high tech district and being a digital district and all that. We live in a world right now where I shouldn't have to be up here saying that um, you know, live streaming is the single best way you can invest in democracy in the school governance process. You know, um you talk about archiving, well, obviously, archiving is a necessity. But um, you know, there's a lot of communication that goes on. We live in a time where you don't wait till the next day to communicate about what's happening. You communicate instantaneously and contemporaneously. And the fact of the matter is, is that if you don't know what you should know, that there are people that watch from home, both city council meetings and school board meetings, and communicate with people who are here about what's going on and what you do. I mean, this is just like, this is this should, this is a no brainer. We have the capability and we can afford the cost of making it possible for you to become a very transparent in real time, uh connected to the community and have, you know, down at the city hall, they post the number of the agenda item on in front of the podium. So that people at home who are watching who decide, I wanna I wanna talk about agenda item number nineteen. When it gets to sixteen, I'm gonna get in the car and drive down there. You are stepping back, you're taking a step backwards to uh to, you know, the old school, old idea. You are stepping back, you're taking a step backwards, you uh to, you know, the old school, old idea, um, uh, by limiting people's access to communications, effective communications about this. Um, so, um, the thing about it is, I don't think that, I I think the only reason to suspend because of ADA uh compliance, I don't think you should suspend it. I think the only reason to suspend is if you're not going to do live streaming, but if you're doing live streaming and somebody wants to talk about ADA compliance and you're in good faith trying to figure out how to comply, you didn't have to suspend. And the fact that you did suspend and the circumstances, the timing under which you suspended, created a lot of uh trust issues in the community, given the history of what happened at the January fifteenth meeting, where the superintendent announced that the meeting was not gonna be recorded because of controversial issues and the next day he reversed that. The fact that the December meeting uh was not recorded at which a board member was, uh, in which changed your procedures under by laws for election of president. The fact that of the in two thousand seventeen, when the uh board succession process was uh deviated from, that meeting was a special meeting that wasn't recorded audio. By the way, when uh the meeting went down in December, uh, why wasn't there an audio recording made? Why, it was one thing to say that the the system went down and finally, um, I think, uh, I'm gonna respect the uh board's time rules there, I can't wait, make that comment later.
Okay, so we need, we have two things we need to give direction, meeting place and then the live streaming.
So I support this is a meeting place and I support live streaming. So there you go.
I I definitely support live streaming, I would like to see what the library would look like and as a meeting place, just for myself to see if that might be better. And it would be helpful for me to see another layout, like the Aspen group might recommend, it's hard for me to just think, oh, yeah, maybe that'd be better, even if it was a diagram.
I worry about the library, just like, you know, because it's focused on the students and I would worry we would take away time they would need for usage, cause there's a lot of career stuff there, scholarship and. And there's just a, there's a lot more than you realize going on the library every day and late.
Okay.
Those, that was my own, that would be, that's why I wouldn't choose it, that would be my concern, is it's really for students.
That would be your. Yes, so we would be less, yeah, so we would look at that schedule too, and is there any other place besides the library that might work?
Yeah.
Or could we change our meetings to a different night and use something from the city, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, do you have any comments?
I think using this room is just fine, it seems like we've been able to meet all the needs of the the groups that have come, like I haven't seen a real challenge there. And I like the way that we've changed, when I first came the first time, it was a square and I was looking at backs when I was sitting in the audience. So I think this is a much nicer way, and I agree with you that the Aspen group has another idea for us, I think that would be be fine. Um, concerning the the technology, we're gonna use, anything that, uh, I like the uh the YouTube because of the modernness and and the keeping up with the times. I I I understand where people are coming from with the other, but it seems would be the investment in the hardware doesn't make sense with as fast as things are changing. But I could be swayed uh either way.
And you want to be doing some investment in hardware, anybody to improve the office.
Right, it's 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 just, I I've been, uh, I had a building once, it cost, you know, millions of dollars to hire and wire. And I had to borrow the money from the central administration and then they decided to tear down the building and, uh, you know, it's, I I've lived through these types of things that. And the waste of money just obviously irritates me to no end.
Um, I believe this is the best location, and it's been the location for as long as I've been in it, and I'd hate for parents to show up here and we're not here, and it's the district office. As well as anyone does have a big same exact time, and I'm not willing to kick students out of what they're doing, so we can meet, we have a meeting place to meet.
Right, that's if we were using the library.
I think it's very hard to explain to people after how for many years the district office has been, you know, the whole central needs have changed. When when Republic is already frustrated, if you use one, whatever it is, other means, I'm sure, whatever they are, so I think there's a frustration in that. I agree, live streaming, um, is important, the way, I also agree that the fact that there's a covenant, or pod, it's technology for free and they keep it current for a long time, um, is equally important. And I don't know, um, I guess I'd like to see the different proposals, like this is the location, and there's four of us saying this is the location. I think it's just understanding what would it look like if it ends up needing that agendas that were paperless? Um, what would that look like and can they do it, what would it look like if it just kept YouTube, right, videos is, and then, um, what is it if we?
So more details.
I think I think, well, I'm not the action item proposal question, so I just think I need the details on those, right, and separate so we really can understand which one.
Yeah. That's thoughtful.
And we can make a motion of what we want, and make a comment. But however that comes out of the product, I just think it's important for us to have those options and really understand, not understand the costing better now, but I'd like to see it laid out. I'm really interested in what we're looking at a system to go paperless, and because technology changes, so if we tie into them, I would think the vendor will also keep it up to date, and I feel better about that decision. So, and I also wanna say that once we knew we're out of compliance, there's absolutely no way I will live with breaking law and being out of compliance. So there's a difference between having intention and um not having intention on something, so.
Well, I would prefer to stay in this room, I think one of the, one of the factors that's really strong on that is that the amount of equipment and that it can't be moved. And so if we put ourselves into some other part of the high school or even hearing that suggestion something in the city, you know, that's not, we don't own that. Then we would be installing equipment and then it might be a conflict, couldn't access it, I mean, it seems, to me, this is, the work, what we have here, I don't even feel that. Um, we live, we look at the Aspen group to give us an idea how to use room, I think our our people here have the expertise to say, let's try this layout. I mean, there's been a lot of different layouts in here, and I think that when we had, um, when we were recognizing the reclassification for the English learners, we had all the quite rows in here filled up. So it's really incumbent a lot of times on the folks who just need to come into the room and be part of the group and that, uh, we're, you know, I don't think we're that overish that there should be, have trepidation to do that. But, um, and also the other, we have had meetings in the library and I thought they were more awkward than in here. And we had larger groups, but it seemed that there was more back talking, more people were further back and felt really free to have their own side conversations, which filtered out. Uh, I didn't, I don't think that it worked very well, I don't, and a number of years ago, we had some meetings in Amoral, uh, when we were asked to move around and like two people showed up. I mean, it was, and it was a lot of work and that, we didn't have this complex equipment, but a lot of work to move there and set it all up and then, you know.
The other issue is parking in the other location is difficult, because we have neighborhood schools, we don't have, yeah.
Right, right. It is. Uh, I just feel we're identified with this place and we need to work to make it work better, but not to leave, not to leave it.
So we're we're voting on this, this is just consensus, consensus, we stay here.
Well, then, I, and that's, so that's what we have, and then, um, no, I I I felt that we needed to suspend when we found out we were out of compliance, because compliance, it is, ADA particularly is a big field. Um, but, um, it seems that we are at a point in time where even if it's us relatively proportionately to population of town, a small number of people who want to watch. I've watched city council meetings, so I think that that's, that's an expectation, and even if 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 there's a price tag that's fairly hefty, I just think that, um, that we need to go that way, so that we're live streaming. And because other places are gonna have to do the closed captioning with live streaming, that price might come down, and people might work on that.
And I. And I. Across our fingers. Yeah, I'm maybe helping with looking at the furniture and anybody else.
Yeah, just my reference to Aspen and the conversation was more, so the the intent was, they said, for you guys to be able to see each other more clearly.
Right, yeah.
So obviously working with the furniture we have doesn't necessarily nest as well, there, we could bring somebody out and I, and what I'd like to be able to do is bring someone out to kind of look at it and say, you know, we're trying to accomplish.
Right.
Give us some different ideas related to that, that I can bring back to to the board for your review. Uh, I think that would be an important component, just trying to make this furniture, those are rectangle tables, maybe say, hey, you know, an expert at layout would say, this is how you can make it where you can see each other better as a group. Elevate you up a little bit as well, uh, potentially, you know, so you can see present to you, whatever it might be, so he'll or she'll give us some ideas around that. Um, one of the things that I would like, potential consensus, obviously it's up to you as a board, um, you know, getting the infrastructure stuff done. Um, knowing that the the amount is roughly what the amount's going to be.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd like to be back for ratification of the contract and get it going, cause we need to order pieces and get everything going, so, um, so you can't take action out of it.
Mm-hmm. Uh-huh.
Consensus, I think, is, I feel like we'd rather get government going on that part. I think the the ca- closed captioning piece, it's gonna have to happen after we get the stuff fixed anyways, so we can get that kind of up and running and make sure we get all that, those pieces going as quickly as possible. So, I feel with that all.
Yes.
So we can sense this, I'm.
Yes.
It's a lot ahead now, so I think.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, we have a few action items to see, the first is action item ten, approval second year of three year contract with ten over research for the twenty nineteen twenty school year.
Thank you, so, um, we've used the number that's the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year, and we plan to use them again for, uh, many of our district wide surveys related to L cap. And school climate, so we're bringing that back through, uh, for this year.
Any public comment on this item? No public comment, so any more questions? What do you think the most valuable research they've done for us?
For me, um, one of the things that we've realized is somewhat of a gap analysis related to the surveys, cause they've been doing it now for several years. So they can see kind of growth over time and on comparing questions, um, and so we've been able to identify areas of growth, areas for improvement, also kind of a gap analysis of what, between what teachers are saying, students are saying, and parents are saying. And oftentimes that helps to inform the school sites as they're developing their single plans or any kind of actions that they're doing related to school culture and climate. Making sure that, okay, we we think this as staff, students think this, and, um, you know, one of those was related to kind of the high school several years ago, where the the staff felt like they were creating a caring environment, the students didn't necessarily agree as much, that gap analysis came through. They spent, and Don Karlamet, kudos to him and his team and the whole staff there, they spent a lot of time working on that and it was one of the, you know, accolades that the WASC chair kind of called out. So in a very short period of time, they addressed that, so I think for me, um, seeing that, cause oftentimes we hear or we think, and, you know, we may have one or two people say, well, this is what I think. But you have that kind of data point and that many students responding, it does validate that, okay, we're starting to see these things, so it, um, I really appreciate that work that they've provided. Um, and you, I would hope that we can continue that, it's real vital for us to be be able to continuously improve, is to have the data to do so.
It gives us information and then we can do something about it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any more motion please, certain.
A second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, here's my vote. Uh, action item eleven, approval implementation service plan with Miflin Park Court for REED one eighty, supported at the intervention for high school districts for the twenty nineteen twenty school year in the not exceed amount of eleven thousand six hundred and fifty seven dollars.
You are the main.
Yeah, me, okay.
Um, so we're, um, asking for your approval plan to, um, approve this service plan for REED one eighty, as you saw, it was updated a few weeks ago. Uh, a report from Miss White that shared some of our, um, data related to REED one eighty and it's a very successful program for us, we want to continue to use it.
Public comment? Motion please, certain.
Second?
Um, any discussion? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, here's my vote. Action item twelve, approval retaining the services of AGI Aspen Group International LLC to direct and facilitate a complete coherent governance project with the Board of Education. Okay, this is really our item, so it's coming back, um, to be.
Just a point of clarification for you to start your discussion, it's one of the things on budget impact that's not included, um, in conversation with Aspen. The reimbursement for customer would not exceed ten thousand, so the, uh, budget impact for things one, two, and three would be closer to sixty thousand, um, not to exceed sixty thousand. So just wanna make sure that you have that, cause that that customary expenses, uh, didn't give you a whole lot of information about what that actually entailed, so.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, questions, okay, any question?
You know, maybe it's both more to Victor, but maybe it's more under discussion.
Public comment on this item?
Uh, yeah, my name is Howard Hills, I'd just like to say that in terms of governments, I thought the last discussion on item number nine was a really good example of good school governance. Um, and, uh, I think that I agree with the comments were made after my public comments about the fact that I would really encourage you to get a unit you own, you control to the greatest extent possible, so that you're not dependent on anybody, if you're dependent on a vendor who operates the system in conjunction with the staff, that's fine, but the point is, um, I really agree with the comments were made. You know, I first attended the meeting in this room in, um, nineteen sixty seven, and at that time, the board sat at a table there and staff sat over to the site. And they had a table for people who were, um, dressing themselves for the board, it's like a congressional hearing, that's why you said about hearing, and then you had lots of room for seats back here. And, um, the board was kind of up against it, and I remember that, it's been a lot more user friendly than anything that you've experimented since then, but, uh, that's obviously a digression. Um, I, um, I think that I, uh, that no amount of governance consulting, I, first of all, I think the ability to do surveys is something that ought to be internally developed within the staff. We already have, I think that governance is something that we should be able to do ourselves without having to hire consultants. But doesn't matter who you hire or what you do in terms of a consultant, or how much money you spend, and you've spent way too much money on it already. Uh, nothing can fix, for example, a situation where you have a board council who initiates a closed meeting. And the closed meeting turns out, it is revealed by the council later in a letter that he wrote. It turns out that the reason the meeting was closed is cause the council thinks that the superintendent is gonna sue the school board and the members of the board individually. Um, because school board members make comments in public about matters that were a matter of public record before the board. That is an example of such pathological governance, that it doesn't matter if you hire Aspen group or anybody else, they can't fix that. That's a problem that is now gonna result in a situation where we're gonna find out what happened in that November fifteenth meeting in that two thousand seventeen, whether there was, uh, Keta Brown raised the issue of who was gonna be elected at the December meeting, we're gonna find that out now. Because of what your council led you to and you let your council lead you to, we're gonna find out now by subpoenas, if we have to, uh, whether or not that discussion took place in the presence of the superintendent in violation of the ground. That's where you go when you have a bad governance model, bad government ethics, and none of us wanna go there, but we're being forced to go there. And that's why you're having some of the problems, so I would urge you to not put money into Aspen and put the, put your efforts in your time and your energy and your resources into developing internal capacity to have coherent governance.
Any other public comment on this, um, item? Any more questions? I don't have a discussion, we have several motion, one discussion and question. Oh, motion, so.
Uh, second?
No discussion, questions, let it go.
Um, I was wondering how often, something that excited me so much about Aspen, surely, taking the law of the policies in a sense and having the law stand alone.
Terrible.
And having the law stand alone from the policies, from making the policies very different, but I thought about how often, um, I don't know how often staff looks at the policies and ARs and stuff like that for all the guidance of what they do. Where they go to move the law, like, I don't know how that works. Where they go through the law, like I don't know how that works. And so it's in one way, I felt like we would need more information about that and understanding of how that works before I would make a decision around this, as well as a few moment that was though. And I don't know if you have an answer now or?
Speaking for myself, I rely heavily on the board policies when it comes to kind of creating administrative regulations around those as well. So we have the regulations that align with what it is that the board's interest are. Obviously, there is law that dictates a lot of the policy, but there are a lot of policies that give you options as a board, one way or the other. And so it's really important for us to know what it is that you as a board believe is the policy that you want us to adhere to. And that allows us to build regulations that we can then enforce those policies, so.
More information from others that we use the policies on? Yeah, that's what we said.
Yeah, so we definitely use them regularly in both human resources and instruction because there are so many decisions that get made in order for us to consistently make decisions that are based on law in your direction. We do utilize them.
And so it's different for you than just looking at what the law is and then reading the policy? Or are you really reading the policy and referring back to the law as needing to work that direction? I'm not sure I read them, but I didn't want to assume that is what you're doing, right?
Okay, Jesus just mentioned there's optional portions. So remember the law sets kind of the baseline. You can always, you know, add, like what we say at HR, you can always add more protections for employees just like their collective bargaining agreements can add more protection. So we always make sure to look at both in the context of our work.
And we customize them here a lot. That's why we have the workshops so that you all have input and we have input on what works here.
Right, so we know what we're doing as well as within those laws, right? And what the practice is, is what kind of what we're talking about themselves and what is the practice, how is that working, right? Do we need to, if that law passes, do we need to adjust our policy or is this in the past with 123 or do we need something? Yeah. And do we need to then adjust our 123 policy or is the policy fine? Right, and so that's one of those. Okay, and so that is the thought of going down to a little bit, it could be exciting for us, but not so much for you guys. Right, and I was really thinking about like how, like for us, so we can know and we know, we know what our direction is. But for you guys, like how does that really affect you? And I was reading for 123, I think, but we really could put a lot in there, right? And build on that with the new law. Or if it's working fine, we just let it the way it is, right? And that would not have been the Aspen suggestion.
Right.
And then Jeffrey, do you use them as regularly?
Very much so, and a lot of it we do for our fiscal, so our social reserves, most of them capital outlet and procurement. To be very specific, because districts all prepare things differently. We set the law, we set the bid limits, and I remember part of these must issue out annual school service. The board policy really drives out at the local level what you expect from us as your staff.
I believe site principals also use them. We're dealing with student staff.
Right, I would, I would think that in the student side of especially.
Yeah, the five thousand.
All the five thousand, yeah. And I know that Aspen gave us all of our recommendations of things we can just do right on our own. And I think maybe looking at that could be more helpful in the discussion, or any questions?
No, we're about, we're about.
The body, oh, yeah, because it's a gap question. But I think that.
I think that, one, since all of us could find a date where it worked for us as a group, I kind of thought that was a, it wasn't as important to all of us.
Right, and just that sense of what will we move to make this happen? And then secondly, I think they gave us some great suggestions from just the layout, kind of thoughts, to a parliamentary person, to a variety of things. And I really would like to look at what they suggested for us before doing anything else. And even having sort of, sorry, this.
Instead of for doing this type of, this is a pretty big commitment. I think it's timing wise, personally, I don't think it's the right time for this big commitment. In reading this book, I felt like this was a little more practical, something we could address. And maybe these experts do briefer trainings because I do think outside governance experts are beneficial and are helpful. But I think this entire commitment, in my opinion, is too altering at this time. Others?
I also think it's too expensive right now. I like Carol's idea, the board member Normandin's idea of looking at what they gave us and seeing if we can incorporate some of those things. I also know that there are other groups that are much less. I looked some of them up, Learning Resources Inc., AASA, which the Aspen people are also a part of. Boardwork LLC, ECB, CBN, actually, a woman who CSBA, Terry Vigil, will come for $2,700, including travel, for six hours to help us with that. So there are, there are a lot of other options I think we should be looking at.
Doctor Kelly?
I hear a consensus that you're going in another direction, and that's fine with me.
Well, I have, I've been concerned before with the cost and the time commitment, which also takes administrative time to work along with the work away from their functions. It's always been for me a feeling, I know there was a comment that Sarah Hutter made about that our staff did the leadership themselves, did the work, did it all together. I've often felt that we have capabilities here to solve our own problems, so to speak. But with this, this really rests with us. And so one of my, besides the cost, and I mentioned it the last time, but the timeliness, the issues that are going on is not, it would be not the right time to me because it would be, we had some commitments made at that end of the seven-hour meeting, which have not been respected since then. And so that was the heart of what they were telling us about recreating trust. And we've gone the other direction. And so the other factor that we heard clearly from the last meeting and the folks that feel there's only one board member who's doing the job correctly, that they fully intend to replace us. And this would fall very close to an election. And if that, if they succeeded in what they've expressed they intend to do, then you would have put all this time and effort into working with a group that will no longer exist six months after you finish the work. So I think that if there's, and I don't see how you get a commitment from board member that is supported by that group to keep this unit together and there. So I think that for me is a bigger problem along with the cost. And I also have to add one thing. I have, we've had people come in and help us with governance before, many different times, many different superintendents. But what I've also experienced is sometimes it's like they come in and think, okay, well, that worked well where we came from. But that's not what we're about here. And it didn't match, it wasn't a fit. So they had a lot of ideas, but it really didn't mesh with what we'd already chosen as a direction here for the, for the district. So I guess I'm more skeptical about, it's kind of what we were discussing tonight, what the recommendation was on the policy. And when that settled in, what our folks feel has worked well for here, they don't really want to take that drastic change. So I think it's, I'm not opposed to get, to hearing new information. I tend to feel more like, like almost like a book club. We have things we read and then we discuss it and we see what we can pull out of that, rather than needing someone to come and tell us how to do it.
I mean, the only thing I, the governance of Aspen, the drastically restructuring of the governance that Aspen recommends, their way, it was one way. That would outlast whoever sits here, is my feeling. I just don't think, I hadn't really thought about how, because for me, I was just so excited at third.
My experience, it would really happen to majority rules.
Well, true, but it changes how they, how they work and then you would have to rework all the policies again. Right, so I just meant like, is it some good governance? I just have a feeling that there are things that, every community is unique. But, but, you know, I'm reading a book, this book, you're, that's like, yeah, but there, there are other, it, it wasn't a radical change.
This one.
That one, right.
Yeah, this was a little more practical.
And Aspen really has a big change.
I agree.
And I haven't thought about how it affects your everyday lives, I mean, the administrators on site. So I just haven't thought about that way, I didn't really get any calls. And because of the law they sent, I just felt there's other things they suggested. And it would get for us to look at those and how it works. That's the timing is not good.
So this is a line that we wrote up.
You don't have to make a motion if you're.
We already made a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for the discussion.
I can amend my motion to vote against it or we all done have a vote next?
So we're covered, we're moving to that.
You can vote, all of you are awesome, you can vote on the current motion.
On the current, I don't have amended to.
Off of the question.
Where's the voting direction?
Off of the question. So we've voted on.
We're voting against. This says we're voting on retaining, retaining their services. So we're, okay, so do we vote? All in favor? Opposed? No? Now? Okay, we have board member requests for item for future meetings and board member requests for information. Public comment on item 15?
My name is Howard Hills. You know, I, when I sat down, one of us comes to have a chance to do a deep reading, I thought about the fact that, you know, I think in terms of the board members thinking about future meetings and what could be on the agenda in future meetings. I think that there's a sense of injustice among a lot of people in our town about some of the things that the board has done. And I think you might want to consider having an agenda item to talk about something in the nature of a reconciliation process, a dialogue about how people feel about this. The people that you may think are sort of like out to get you are not out to get you, but they are really concerned about some of the things that happened. Just for example, to repeat again, when Mark Risi came in and told you you were going to have a closed meeting and you got into that closed meeting and you found out that what he was saying was that the superintendent is going to sue the school district because board member Perry acknowledged that people were staying in public and they were concerned about retaliation. The board members should have, it should have been instinctive, you should have said, you've closed a meeting because you think the superintendent is going to sue Dee Perry and the rest of us? Because Dee Perry says something that was a matter of public record? You should have said, you don't have the right, Mr. Counsel, to close a meeting. By the way, who closed that meeting? If it was a closed meeting and it had to be agendized, the superintendent had to approve it. Or if he didn't, because they didn't want to talk to him about the fact that the supposed litigation threat was him, then the board president must have approved that closing of the meeting. The point is, this goes all the way back, you can say Howard Hills crazy, still talking about what happened in, in November of 2017. But I'm not crazy. There are people that believe that injustice has been done. And you, Mr. Kelly, in your last letter, said it's time to turn the page. Well, it's not time to turn the page until the book is open. You can't turn a page on a book that's closed. And the book has been closed on what happened past. I've asked the superintendent 30 times in meeting, well, okay, five times, exaggerating. I've actually asked him 30 times, but in terms of what's on the record. Was there a discussion in that, at that 2017 meeting in November in which there was basically a consensus worked out about who were going to be the officers elected in December? If there was, obviously, the statute of limitations is run on it, so it's not a ground violation act for you guys. But the question is, did the superintendent advise you at that meeting that that was bad governance for you to be doing what you were doing? So the point is, I would just say in terms of a future agenda item, think about the idea of bringing people together who have a sense of injustice and talking about it. I think it's inappropriate to talk about what's going to happen in next year's election. I think what you, but your point is a good point, Madam President, about the fact that between now and then, it would be healthy, create, do just what you said, develop your own capacity to have the right reactions on those governance issues when they come up.
Is there any other public comment on this item? Okay, then we start with board members, Dr. Kelly.
The last thing I asked about filming meetings and we've taken care of that. We, I also ask about is a way to turn off the microphone as far as when people go over to three minutes. If we get the new system, we have to deal with that. The pension obligations, we go into our report and have asked that to be brought up to the full board and for the public to hear. And you have instructed me that that will take place, I think, at the next meeting. And the last thing that I had asked about last time was talking with the city manager about part-time police officers rotating throughout the schools. And I haven't heard anything about that, so I'd like to meet with the chief right now. That's fine. Yeah.
Okay, good. Couple of comments. I would really like to thank Ryan for doing the barbecue for the custodial staff. I think that was fantastic. I didn't know about that, but I'm really happy to hear that you did that. At the professional leadership day, I was there for the, just a little bit for the icebreaker part where they use the strengths, the five strengths. And it was, looked like an activity that might be helpful for the board also, looking at our strengths and appreciating each other's strengths. And it was really fun to watch the staff. It was really loud in the beginning and then it kind of just got all talking, watching. Everybody was really happy and responding, listening as well as talking. The last thing, I spent some time looking at the community coalition and the mental health signs. And at the same time, I've been looking at the new legislation in Oregon about students now may take mental health days, that's part of being able to be absent. I think they can take five excusable mental health days in a three-month period. And Utah is also expanding that. What is really important about that, or is to me, is that students initiated that. Students were the ones that went to the state and said, our mental health is as important as our physical health. And we need to take care of that too. And for us to have to libel our parents because we're afraid to go to school or something's going on and say we're sick, isn't helping us. We need to get it out in the open. So I was very impressed and thought that was a wonderful thing for students to advocate for, for mental health. They also advocated for gun control and lowering the age to vote. They weren't successful on that one. But I love that they cared and took the initiative. And that might be something that the community coalition could look at, the high school, as long as we're looking at mental and social health.
And that was Oregon and Utah?
Oregon and Utah.
And they closed?
July, in July, Oregon passed it and Utah passed one that isn't quite as inclusive.
Okay.
I wanted to comment that that quarterly communication summary was excellent. That was a really great summary, well done. Also, I attended a professional development seminar on managing the board with a superintendent relationship. And I just learned some key issues that I've repeated many times in my comments. The board governs as a team, we are an entity of five, majority rules. Board members have no power as individuals. And the role of the board is what are we going to do? We are not operational leaders of the district, it is not our job to say how to do it. So thank you for supporting that training for me. I also noticed there's lots of opportunities for our staff, leadership, strength programs. And so I really celebrate that you understand that learning is not just about our students, but everyone that works in this district, no matter what their job. I also want to comment that the last meeting, a supporter, board member Perry has made a statement demeaning the district for offering bilingual in our district brochure. I was highly offended by the comment and I regret not saying something at the time. But I want to say that this is an education institution and we will offer anything that accommodates our students in any language necessary and for our children and their families. And I found it really offensive that she made that statement, I'm sorry. Very upsetting in a moment.
I agree with you totally, I may copy some of it if anyone wants to see, but I thought it was.
I agree with you totally, I made copies of it if anyone wants to see, but I thought it was very racist in nature, in my opinion.
So, the other thing I want to talk about is I went through all the public records requests that have been made and linked and read them all, went through them all. And I would like a legal opinion on an issue I discovered in those requests. I noticed in some emails from board member Perry, she was not going to release her private emails from people talking about the district because they believe they wanted to remain anonymous. I believe that's against what the Supreme Court of California has decided, which is those names will be redacted. But she is obligated, as all of us are, to release any board content on our private, our district email, our telephone, our texting. And for one person to not follow that, I have concerns because that's not transparent. I myself have followed it and gone through my own personal emails, but that concerned me. So I'd just like a legal opinion, so we can all follow exactly the same standard.
I think you got the wrong idea, I released everything from my private emails. But after I released them, I wouldn't embrace.
We can't discuss it, since it's going to run. Just a legal opinion on that, to make sure we're.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. She brought up. I did want to do clarification that the school board has a fiduciary responsibility and legal to not discuss ever what happens in closed session items, in closed session, ever. And we don't discuss personnel in open session, we do that in closed session. We don't discuss litigation in the public, we discuss that in closed session. In December of last year, Dee Perry did not nominate herself to be president, so no one had a chance to vote on whether she could be president or not. And I'll continue to say that as long as people continue to tell us that we did something wrong.
But I do know that you need to be cool.
Okay, we're not having a discussion.
Just keep talking.
So we, we did not violate the Brown action, the Brown action closed session. Sometimes if anyone get caught, you know, start digressing in any way as human本能, quickly, there's not, oh, we're in violation, we move right back. In a sense of, or it could end up in violation if we keep going down that path. Oh, my, sorry, I forgot. And then last thing I forgot to say at the beginning was, Margaret, I also don't think I lost Vegas. I voted then for one reason, is to help elect someone. And I appreciate you, all your dedication, all the time. The fact that you go do that every year, you really appreciate it. Here you say it, now I hear you say it. We actually owe all of this, to all of you guys, all of you, we hear you. And some of us are taking notes while you're speaking, right? I really appreciate it, thank you. And I appreciate you reminding us sometimes that different trainings that you experience can be helpful to us. I hear that too. We really do. Think about it. Thank you for all of the support of the public issues. And that's all. Oh, and then I did, I did want to say, I also had a comment I wanted to make about very, I found it to be a very racist statement. I instead bought books for the Boys and Girls Book about stories of how people had to work against that same racism all those different years. But I thought I said something. So thank you for doing this.
Okay.
I think we all were a little stunned and we got a comment, especially at a board of education meeting and how policy degree have attempted to be in this district, it really went against the grain, what we stand for. I just would like to know if there's been any clarification with Edison Power, the red flag days and shutting off the power you got a concern about. If they do that, we can't hold school. And if those would be, if the states looking at makeup days or what's going to happen? If there's any new information on that? That is maybe in the agenda item just to update. And then I, with your comment about the strengths, we did that, Dee. We had two temple comment, we did strengths, we did all of ours, were you not there at that meeting?
Yeah, no, I was saying, this wasn't what this was. This was a different activity, where you chose your top five strengths.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to explain it to you.
Yeah, Dr. Laura can explain it.
Okay, and then just to, a clarification I did, actors, public officials are required to put up with anybody saying anything a lot about them. So there isn't a defamation issue when you're a public official. But it's incumbent upon us that we don't offend others, because that would be an issue we have a greater responsibility. But it's part of what, it's part of what goes with the territory of being a official. So I just wanted to clarify that. So we have a official meeting this Thursday, working on the performance evaluation goals for the superintendent for this twenty nineteen, twenty-two year. And that's this Thursday here at eight AM. And then our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, here in the boardroom at six PM. And then that's for motion to adjourn.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Close. Five votes.